I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the School District of Waukesha Full Board of Education Meeting on February 13th, 2019. Glad you all could make it. True Wisconsinites after our snowstorm, so winter has returned. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed and indivisible, with liberty and justice as our.
Will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzynk.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Thank you, Sue. And can you also verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you for doing that. Moving on to bright lights, tonight we have the principal from Hatfield, Al Bush, who's going to be presenting on student leadership and community building. Al, welcome.
Thank you.
I bet you you may have some other people to talk on this, too.
I do. I'm not going to lie to the speaking, actually. I mean, I bring the student leaders that are doing that leading come forth to do some of that speaking as well. So they're following up behind me here. So at Hatfield, we have really worked in the last several years on really building our student leadership opportunities and community building within our building. So today, a few of our students and teacher leader are going to present on some of the things that they've been doing to build leadership within and experiences that they've had. So I will step aside and let them share.
My name is Mrs. Kevkarm. I'm the FIAD teacher at Hatfield. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the Husky Herd program that we have at Hatfield, which is kind of like our student council program. So coming together with classroom teachers, we were able to pick students that exemplify leadership and show leadership traits at our building. And we meet once weekly to talk about quotes, different ideas that we have to share leadership within our building. We do a thoughtful log each week about a journal question that we've -- that challenges to think about our leadership skills. And currently, right now, we're working on creating a plan and a lesson plan and a video to share back with their classmates about calming strategies. So students right now are working on creating those videos to share with their classmates.
As a bus helper, it's our job to get the students packed up and get safely to class. To be leaders, we have to make sure we are doing our job, be responsible in our class, and then go support younger students and be role models for them. Responsibility is the main character skill I use as to be a bus helper.
We're also lucky enough that we have buddy classes that older students are paired with younger students, and they meet at least once monthly, oftentimes more. And they work on projects. Oftentimes, they talk about social-emotional learning skills, or they're supporting and reading to each other and working on different types of academics. The kids really enjoy it, and the older kids, it really brings out that natural leadership skills within them, so they do a wonderful job with that.
The board has heard about junior coaches before, but this is still an awesome leadership opportunity that we have at Hatfield. As leaders, we work to have positive attitudes to help others solve problems and build the skills to problem-solve themselves, too.
The last one that I'll mention, and we're just really working -- oop, I wasn't supposed to close that. That's okay. Is peer mentors. So this is something that we are, I would say, more in a pilot phase of. We have just a few pairs matched up at this point, but it's pairing younger students with older students that might be struggling a little bit with some of their choices, if you will, and they are kind of helping each other through that. So they're really having that big brother, big sister kind of piece within our building where they can find each other throughout the day. They have scheduled times where they meet and they do a check-in. And it's been really something that our students have found positive. They enjoy seeing that big person or little person, whoever it may be, kind of in the halls of the building. So it's something that we've started to roll out this year with a few pairs and have found some really nice success with. So we're looking to continue that process as well, as well as the things that the girls had mentioned and Ms. Kevkarm had mentioned. So those are just a few of the bright lights and highlights that we have in terms of what we're trying to build with student leadership and community building at Hatfield. But we're excited to build on that and ensure that process with you, because we think it's going to be really great. So, thank you.
Well, you can't get away yet. You have to see if there's any questions. Yes, Karen.
Thank you. So I was wondering where you got the idea for the peer mentoring, and then how do you pair the kids up?
Sure. So part of that came out of our student services team. We meet weekly to talk about how things are going building-wide when it comes to student academics, behavior, social-emotional learning, things like that. And so one of our team members had, at a older level, talked about this experience. And we thought, well, why can't we do that in elementary? So it started from that team, and we then thought about what would be good pairs, knowing the kids as well as we do, and from that team and touching base with teachers, starting to pair those together.
So is each holder paired with a younger, or is it -- okay.
Yeah, we try to have a couple of grades of separation, so they have that mentor-mike-like separation. And they're -- hopefully, when they're a little further apart, they won't feel quite as -- the peer pressured to act a certain way or do a certain thing. So they really take on that, I am a mentor, I am a leader, what I do does matter because I have younger eyes looking at me, or vice versa.
Mrs. Brzynk.
Yes, what have you noticed during your building as far as student-to-student relationships? Student-to-student relationships and the true energy?
I think it's continuing to evolve. I think the more we develop these opportunities for students, the more we will continue to see that positiveness happen. But it's still work in progress in some areas, but through different pockets and highlighting the good work of the girls and others, we're looking to continue to grow that. So a positive, but there's work to be done.
Mr. Baumgart? Could you tell me the first names of the two girls?
Of course. So this is Skylar.
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 And Stella.
Stella. Well, Stella and Skylar, would you come up to the microphone once? I want to -- I'm more interested in talking to you than --
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Could you -- would you guys be -- what grade are we in here?
I'm in fourth.
Fourth grade.
I'm in fifth.
Okay. What are you getting out of doing this? What's your favorite thing that you are getting out of this?
Skylar with the bus partner? Do you enjoy going down and helping?
Okay. Tell us that.
I feel like my sister can learn that it's really nice to be helpful and share love.
Very good. Thank you.
My favorite part is that I get to check on my bus partners to see how their day was and if I can help them, if they're, like, sad.
Very good. Thank you. Can you give some examples of how you've helped them?
Well, if their backpack was too heavy, I would carry their backpack. Or if they were sad, I would give them a hug or talk to them.
Excellent.
If, like, my sister, she has, like, a snow pants and, like, jacket mixed together, and she sometimes has trouble with it, so when I go back in the classroom and help her get it on, she feels happy afterwards.
Yeah, sometimes it's simple things that you can do that can make a really big difference. It doesn't always have to be a really big thing to do, right? And listening to them is always important, right? And I'm sure with the experience that you two have, you can bring that to them and help them through those situations, and that's what this is all about. Keep up the good work. Any other questions for our students? Great job. Keep on being leaders. Tonight, we do not have any recognitions, but we do have student representatives from Waukesha South High School to let us know what's going on at South. Delaney and Tanner.
Hello.
Hello, I'm Delaney. I am head of Public Relations for Student Council. I'm the president of National Honor Society. I do tennis and the Black Shirt Newspaper.
Hi, my name is Tanner Orne. I'm also in Public Relations for Student Council. I'm also in drama, and I'm part of the Black Shirt briefing.
We're both seniors at Waukesha South, and thank you for letting us share our highlights from first semester.
So first off, we're going to start off with our wrestling team. Noah Verhalen is our Classic Eight Conference Champion. He's always working in the weight room, no time off. We have a really great following this year, and we've had many kids excited to be there and to cheer on our wrestling team. Overall, they placed second in the Plymouth Dual Tournament, but they're always improving no matter how tough the competition is. And we have seven students who are going to individual sectionals. We have three sophomores, two juniors, and two seniors.
Then we have boys swim, who are the Classic Eight Conference champs, and they're also sectional champs this year. They're moving to state, which is this Saturday, the 16th, at Madison. They were actually scored 20 points higher than second place, and we have a 400 free relay team that swam to first and broke the pool record. We also had Jacob Carlson, who's won first in the 100 Backstroke, and he also set another pool record. He's also recognized as a Journal Sentinel High School Sports Award last year, and he's one of our team captains.
And then with our hockey team, we had a huge win over Arrowhead on senior night. Waukesha South has three seniors. We have Garrett and Chad Larson. They are brothers, and they're standout players. They have a great relationship, and they benefit the team overall. They're great leaders, and they have many articles written all about them. And then our other senior is Isaiah Dietrich. He has played all four years in hockey.
We also have a couple of girls on the gymnastics team. The gymnastics team is a combined of all Waukesha schools, and it consists of 25 girls, which is a good turnout. They have three teams, the JV II team, the JV team, and the varsity team, and they're moving on to sectionals next week.
So one of our clubs that we have at Waukesha South is Girl Talk. Their overall goal is to promote academic and personal success for any young lady. They meet once per week and discuss issues, topics that they feel are important, and they focus a lot on volunteering in our community and service tasks at South.
So we also have Student Council, which me and Tanner are part of. We had two blood drives this last semester, and our last one, which is at the end of January, we had a little setback because the day before, we had the snow day. So we went in actually with zero appointments, which was not the best, but we actually still did very good, and we ended up meeting our drive goal, all on walk-in appointments that day. We saved about 116 lives, and we had 26 first-time donors. We even had four dual red procedures.
I was one of those procedures.
And last time we came in, we told you about how we were going to do Secret Santa for Woodyr, and it went very well. We had a lot of bright smiles on their faces, and we had a lot of kids who were very happy to go home with a toy that day. We also have our special education. A big part of that now is WEKNOS, which was founded by our special education teacher, Mr. Forsack. WEKNOS stands for West, North, and South put together. They went ice fishing with their mentors, I believe it was last week, at Fowler Lake in Oconmelawak. It's 80 students, all made up of the three different schools, and there's 40 mentors and 40 mentees who went on this fishing trip. It gives our students a great opportunity, like, outside of the traditional classroom setting. Things they've done, actually, prior to this, they had Trees for Tomorrow, which is in Eagle River, and the Shed Aquarium, which is down in Chicago.
So another club that we have at Waukesha South is the Positive Change Committee. This is created by Tiana Willis and our English teacher, Ms. Bayer. Overall, what they want to do is they want to improve staff and student administration relationship. They want to make everyone feel as if they have a place in the school and community, and they want everyone to belong. And they want to be more successful in school education, and it provides a student voice for us.
So we also have two business clubs that are involved in the community. It's FBLA and DECA. For FBLA, in January, they had a hat-and-scarf drive, and we also had five students qualify for DECA State at regionals. DECA State is in March, and we had a team of two getting first and three students getting second in their individual events. And then we also, DECA did a food drive early in the semester to donate, obviously, but three students competing in DECA State will be in March, and two students qualified for DECA and FBLA State for both of them.
So we also have our talent show coming up, which we have now called the Spring Show. For the talent show, it's kids get to go out there and they get to show what they're good at. They're free to do whatever they want and feel comfortable with. Very super supportive environment, and all the students enjoy it at Waukesha South. And I will be taking part, doing some dancing, maybe some singing. We don't know about that yet. Delaney will be doing some skits.
It's a great way to get all of us involved. It's really nice. We also have a new Avid session that just started. The interview process just finished recently, and we're going to be adding six new sessions, one senior, one freshman, two junior, and two sophomore sessions.
So for our AP tests, we have the highest number of students and the highest number of tests being taken, 776 exams. That is 125 more than the next closest school. And we also have 414 students, and that's 20 more than the next highest school.
We also, our art program is thriving. We did middle school visits and told the students about how to get involved in our program, how to really apply themselves, and what our school has to offer. But we also have scholastics. They got awards this last weekend at the Milwaukee County Art Museum. We had 29 students overall with nine gold keys, eight silver keys, and 12 honorable mentions. The gold keys actually go on to a national competition in New York, and the gold and silver keys are on display at the Milwaukee Art Museum from February 3rd to March 18th in the Schrader Galleria.
So our drama program at Waukesha South is doing great. Their last production was The Laramie Project, which we also competed in one act, and we got to go to state for the third year in a row, actually. Three students, including myself, won Outstanding Lead Actors at a state level, and our winter musical that's coming up very soon is Into the Woods, and that'll be taking place March 7th, 8th, and 9th. And then our last show, the Spring Show, will be the female version of The Odd Couples.
Thank you for letting us share our highlights on our first semester.
What questions do we have for --
I've got a comment.
Yes, Mrs. Brzynk.
You know, you just are living testimony that we're doing good things in our school district, and it's so wonderful to have you here, so enthusiastic, so proud of your school. Isn't that what we want in our school district? So thank you and congratulations, and best wishes to you as you graduate and move on to the next phase of your life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? I had a suggestion for your talent show.
Yeah?
You know, I thought maybe you could invite some teachers or administrators to participate.
If you're down.
Or alumni? There you go. Not me, I'm out of town that weekend.
We can get a sign-up sheet and pass it around so people can be involved.
Should be fun. Should be fun. You guys are so relaxed when you give your report and so authentic. It's really, really nice how you present. You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your report. Now it's time to have an opportunity for our citizens to address the Board of Education. We allow up to three minutes for comments, and after two and a half minutes, Mr. O'Brien will give you a signal to wrap up in the next 30 seconds. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit and to refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker. And the Board of Education, refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. And if we could all turn off our cells or silence our cellphones now at this time, that would be appreciated. We do have three people that have signed up. Matthew Gifford, followed by Kelly Ward.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Gifford. Thank you all for being here today. Tomorrow is Valentine's Day, so Happy Valentine's Day, and I'd like to thank the Board for their service and love that they've so far expressed for their community. I would also like to thank them for proposing mental health funding for the district and an increase in security measures last year in 2018. Tomorrow is also the first anniversary of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas School shooting in Parkland, Florida. I ask that you take a moment tomorrow to think of the 17 lives lost and show love to people here in Waukesha, whether it be family, friends, or colleagues. I've had the opportunity to speak with many people affected by violence in their own communities, and I'm thankful that we have little violence at all here in Waukesha, but we must keep it that way, all of us working to protect and help all people in need, just like the first responders did in Parkland 364 days ago. To Parkland educators like Scott Beagle and Aaron Feis, who lost their lives saving students, and 15-year-old Anthony Borges, who shielded his classmates and thankfully survived, as well as the many other staff and students who helped others that day and every day since. David Hogg, a recent graduate from Marjory Stoneman Douglas, once told me, "Remember to lift others as you climb." We need to remember to love one another in hard times and lift others up when you can. Thank you all for that. Thank you all again for all that you do.
Kelly Ward, followed by Paul Reese.
My name is Kelly Ward, and I'm a 2013 graduate of Waukesha South High School, who spent my entire K-12 career in the district. First off, I'd like to sincerely thank all the members of the Board who decided to make funding student mental health a priority. This is an issue that's gone under the radar in the district for far too long, and I am very happy to see it finally getting some attention. Tomorrow is the one-year anniversary of the tragedy of Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Florida, which is an event that propelled many young people, such as myself, to advocate for increased school safety and more thorough mental health services for students in memory of the 17 people who died that day, as well as other victims of violence. As someone who has experienced gun-related violence, gun-violence-related trauma while I was a student at higher in 2005, I would like to encourage the creation of a task force to address best practices for mental health services, specifically focusing on those students who have experienced trauma in their lives, so staff and the community can help them more effectively. Trauma-informed mental health services and trainings are extremely important for improving the quality of life for both students, staff, and the community, and I firmly believe that if the Board invests in this methodology, the district would improve vastly both its role as a safe space for students and a space for them to thrive. Thank you so much for your time and for all that you do.
And Mr. Reese?
That kid Tanner, I remember when he was born. He used to live next door to me. Fantastic seeing him. It's been a while. You know, I went to high school here in Waukesha, and I sat here all summer and listened to, you know, people puke out things about history and that and get them absolutely wrong that nobody stood up in Germany and, you know, stood up and voiced an opinion against the rise of Hitler and the socialists. But this isn't true. There were a lot of people who stood up, but the Germans had a group of, well, today they have hooligans, but then they had the brown shirts that made sure people shut up when they wanted to speak their mind. The fascists had a group that was Mussolini's group that he was in had up largely, and they wore the black shirts. And they made sure people didn't stand up and say something. But then there were the people who sat down intentionally and ignored what was going on, and they were the pathos of this. They were led by the free world at that time, which was England, and a guy by the name of Neville Chamberlain, who said things before the British Parliament, like, "Why should we worry about a people over there? Why should we care? What concern does this have to do with us? It's over there. It's happening." And he stood one time in front of Heathrow Airport in one of his greatest speeches, and he stood there and he held a piece of paper in his hand, and he said, "I have found peace in our times." And how many 60 million later died or whatever from that, you know, that his idea of peace? But these are things that I learned well after high school. I never learned them in high school. I never, I didn't know who Neville Chamberlain was when I graduated high school. And I had to listen to people tell me that people didn't try to stand up and do it. There was a famous physicist who was expelled from Germany. I don't know if anyone had heard of him, but he was a guy by the name of Albert Einstein, you know? He was expelled from there. He fled with his life. He had to leave family members behind. It wasn't that nobody stood up and nobody said anything. This garbage about guns is just completely misunderstood. People don't know where they come from and where people have progressed, why we have guns, why we, why I have a need to them, why I have the ability to support myself. You know, I can hunt and collect game. I know how to do it, and I know what it means to be done. And someone saying AR-15 is the problem. I have a seven Rem Meg that is just, I've never tracked a deer out of its step with it. You talk about a powerful weapon, but it has nothing to do with that, you know? People just don't know what they're talking about on these things. And anyways, I thank you for your time, and again, have a good weekend. See you next month.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Board that hasn't signed up? Moving on to our minute approval, we have one set of minutes for approval, and that was for our Board of Education meeting on January 9th. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Mrs. Brzynk.
I second it.
Seconded by Diane Voight. Any discussion, corrections? Sue, take the vote.
Barbara Brzynk.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Abstain.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Pass is 801, Sue. Moving on to our communications.
Nothing this evening.
Okay.
No correspondence.
Mrs. Voight, do we have a report on the Waukesha Education Foundation?
Yes, we do. The available Waukesha Education Foundation-held scholarships list has been sent by Sue Ettinger to all the high school guidance offices, and I think it's important to realize that there are 29 WEF scholarships available at the high school level, and three scholarships for middle school students, especially that are involved in the band program. We have one new scholarship this year that is being added, the Frederick C. Christensen Memorial Fund. It's a scholarship that will offer $225 each to a student from West and one from South that has demonstrated a love for instrumental music. This part of the Waukesha Education Foundation is a growing area each year as new scholarship funds are established, often to remember an educator as a permanent memorial, like the one for Frederick C. Christensen. WEF-sponsored cookies at the Waukesha One Conference, and Melissa Baxter, a WEF board member, presented two sessions of our grant-writing tips for our staff. Approximately 40 people attended the two very informative sessions. Our annual grant window will open this Friday, February 15th, and will close Friday, April 5th. We made very minor changes to this year's application and have built in a full week following spring break to allow teachers more time to collaborate after break to do the finishing touches on their applications. We have made improvements to the rubric provided to teachers so they know what the grants are going to be based on, the application process. We're planning to offer weekly grant tips on our social media. If you're into following Facebook and Twitter, we're hoping to be able to give tips, to be able to help inspire teachers. That link will be open for the website. It will go live this Friday to let the 2019 grant application process begin. WEF is appreciative that the School District of Waukesha is planning to offer us some office space here at the Lindholm Building. This is much appreciated because it'll allow us a place to more easily work collaboratively with the district, and also the opportunity to have a location where a potential intern can be able to join our activities. Thank you very much for making that possible.
Thank you, Diane. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were wrapping up your report.
Please mark your calendars for our WEF Walk Run and Wellness Fair coming up on Saturday, May 11th at North. Watch your weekly packets for more information, and we hope that you and your families will be able to attend. The Celebration of Excellence is coming back and will take on a gala-type format again as it did many years ago. The COE will take place on Thursday, November 14th, at the Ingleside Hotel. It will feature a dinner, raffle, silent auction, and WEF award presentations. We will celebrate all that is good in our district, so mark your calendar for November 14th in the evening for that event. We'll be seeking nominations soon for the 2019 WEF Awards, the WEF Corporate Partner, the WEF Community Partner, and the Sally Jo Machelko Lifetime Excellence in Education Awards. So if you have any ideas of potential nominations, please let me know. WEF is looking forward to attending the March School Board Meeting for Bright Lights and sharing our annual report with the Board at that time. So thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
I didn't mean to cut you off there early, Diane. And I would highly encourage our teachers to apply for the grants. I know every teacher watches us every month for our full Board of Education meetings. But I know, in all seriousness, they're excellent grants. The things that the teachers and students have done with the grants are spectacular. And I've always been impressed with the work that the students and the teachers have done. It's really good, good use of the grant money. So extending those learning opportunities. Thank you, Diane. Moving on to the consent agenda. Darren, did we receive any gifts? Oh, I'm sorry, Bill. Bill, do you have a report to give?
Nice try, Joe.
Almost made it.
Well, Diane went a little long, so I wanted to keep the board meeting moving.
Anyway, I do have two items to report on. Very positive things that have happened in the last couple of weeks here. First off, on February 7, the North High School hosted an avid school showcase. They are one of two avid programs in the state that have been selected as a showcase school. Guests from five or six other districts attended, along with some of the avid organization employees. Staff presented three sessions, a history of how we got to this point. In particular, they were interested in North being able to progress in about 18 months to having the thing running well, very well. So the first point was on how we got to this point. Then we visited classes, mostly the non-elective classes so we could see how that part of the avid program was working, which is a newer part to us as a district. And lastly, a panel discussion using staff and students. I was very pleased that I personally had wondered a little bit about the non-elective process that was being used in, using avid in the work and how that would turn out. It worked just fine, and it definitely will benefit our students. And actually, I would say it is benefiting our students. You could see the progress they were using it for. I felt additionally it helped alleviate any tensions among the staff and students that existed because of a previous separation between those that were in avid and those that are not in avid. It's muting that. Everybody's now got an opportunity to use avid. So a very wonderful morning was spent on that. Next, I want to mention Butler. You know mine now particularly. You should have had this in your packet this week. This morning, I went over to Butler because they were running a practice run on their presentation they'll be doing when they're in Washington, D.C., which they will be leaving Saturday morning for that. So I want to mention the Butler Lucky Seven is on their way to Washington, D.C. to compete in the Future City Nationals. Side note here, it's a nice title, but I don't think they should be considering themselves lucky because they really put a lot of work into this. I observed their practice presentation this afternoon. Quite simply, I was humbled by it. These kids are thinking at a tremendous level and are putting together a program that I just wouldn't have anticipated for seventh and eighth graders. Very creative, very literate on the subject. The subject was to prepare a city 100 years out into the future to be resilient and able to maintain their power grid in the event of a natural disaster. And these kids had ideas. I don't know where they got them. It was beautiful. They won through the various levels of competition, and they will be the school that is representing Wisconsin in Washington, D.C. next week. So you saw a little bit about it in the emails and maybe even in the newspaper, but to see these kids working at it this morning was just awesome. It was very awesome. And that concludes my report.
That's pretty exciting. I'm glad I didn't skip over you, Bill. Thank you, Bill.
You'd never get away with that, Joe.
No, that's, we wish them luck. I hope they do. We hope they do very well.
By the way, I told them that I couldn't help but talk about them tonight, so.
Sure, sure.
They deserve it a lot.
It'll be pretty exciting to see how well they do. Now we can move on to the consent agenda, and we'll start with Darren. Did we receive any gifts this month?
Yeah, four gifts. The district received a gift from Discovery Education of $1,000 that was used for the popcorn snack bar at the Waukesha One Conference. The Waukesha Made Program received $3,000 from Delzer Lithograph to be used for updates, repairs, purchase of new equipment. North High School received a gift from Mary Frances Holshauer, 2004 Chevrolet Tracker, estimated value of $1,800 was given to the auto department for kids to perform repairs and maintenance updates on. And some of you elementary received $4,000 from Meyer to be used to create a student art gallery in their west lobby.
Generous gifts. Thank you for those gifts. Wow. Your agenda tonight includes various categories for approval. There were no expulsions for our consideration. If any board member wishes to have any item set aside for further discussion, please let me know at this time. Otherwise, Mrs. Reinacek, will you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. Early this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of three resignations, eight retirements, 10 leaves of absence, seven new or modified teacher contracts, and 49 administrator contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desk. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Given by Amanda? Discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine, zero, Sue?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Gray, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yesterday was snow day number five. We've had more snow days this year than in the past seven years combined. Fortunately, we do have three snow days built in, and we're looking at one makeup day on June 10. The fifth day, we're looking at making it up through various minutes and so on. And at this point, one more snow day, because we do have a lot of winter left, would cause us to look at further some, perhaps just an adjustment of minutes or eliminating early relief days or whatever. We certainly don't want to go past June 10. I still plan, I still believe it's important to petition DPI for some relief on this. There are many districts who are in far worse shape than we are in terms of these makeup days and makeup minutes. And the unfortunate fact of the matter is, when you tack on a day at the end of the year, maybe it's even after your senior graduation, you're adding a day that's just not cost-effective. And I would hope that our DPI, who you would hope cares about our financial situations, would understand that and give us some relief on minutes in some manner or another. So during the cold spell, the governor did call for a state of emergency, but apparently that doesn't count for school districts, even though we are under, technically, we're run by the state. So I think that's something perhaps our legislative committee can work on in the future. And I think that's, we should be taking a look at that. Speaking of snow, I want a real shout-out for our maintenance custodial staff. Over the last couple of weeks, they have had a lot of, well, I guess they haven't had much sleep at all because they are usually out there 2:30. And our director, Tim Williamson, is nice enough to text me at 2:30 a.m. to let me know that we're out in there. But I do appreciate that because I know that our lots will be okay. But this last one was, this was tough. And, you know, we've heard both from the city and our own crews that there was no way they could keep up with lots yesterday. So it was a good call. And as you know, just about every school district, Waukesha County, Jefferson, Ozaki, all, even Milwaukee called off school. So it was a good call. The Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding just released the recommendations. The last report you might have seen was actually the report of all different types of funding studies. But this was issued as recommendations, and there's a number of areas of that that really do, would really help us tremendously, one being increased special ed funding, mental health funding, eliminating the negative tertiary aid on long-term borrowing, which that, we're one of the few districts that does impact our aid when we have paybacks on long-term borrowing. So those are some areas that the commission wants to look at. And, you know, I'm feeling somewhat better about this than in prior years because we have, the report was authored by two high-level Republican representatives in the Assembly and the Senate. And again, our governor hopefully doesn't forget where he came from in terms of taking care of school funding. So, you know, we're using a very conservative approach for budget forecasts, but I am somewhat bullish that we could do, we could be in a much better situation come this September. So finally, I think, you know, it's a secret. We are, we have looked at consolidating some schools in the central part of the district. Blair Hawthorne and Lowell, we met Monday night to discuss some of the options for that. And to that end, myself and my executive team split up today to go meet with the staff of the three schools involved. And Chris Edstrom and I met with the Blair staff, and I just, hats off to that staff. They, you know, given what was potentially happening to them in terms of school closing, you know, they looked at this as an opportunity. They really, they took a very professional, high-level approach to it. And I just want to thank them profusely because they were facing a tough situation, and they chose to look at it as an opportunity. So feeling good about the overall plans. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do, a tremendous amount of work to do there, but I think it's a good situation. And in this particular consolidation, there's many benefits. Again, we know that larger schools have a much easier time of moderating class sizes. We can add more programming. We can add more professional student services people, such as psychs and social workers, that you might not be able to do to a school that has less than 200 students. So there's a lot of good things that can happen for students and families through this particular plan. And I'm pretty optimistic that we're in a good place at this point. So hopefully, we'll have all the details ironed out by the March Board meeting. We have our parent meetings coming up in another week. And for whatever reason, I forgot the dates, but there are two in February, and then we have one on March 6 as a backup because the way it's been lately, we can't trust the weather here.
You'll get that out in our packets?
That will, yeah, that will be coming on Friday. So in any event, that's the news for this particular month. And again, once again, thanks to all our staff, but especially our Blair, Lowell, and Hawthorne staff who really are looking at this as an opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Moving on to our committee reports. We're going to start off this month, we rotate through who begins, and this month's Safety and Security Committee, given by Amanda Roddy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Safety and Security Committee last met on January 17. There were three information items on the agenda. The first item is the update on the status of the school safety grant. Currently, 60% of the required trauma-informed care staff training is complete. The district is also in the process of installing safety film on the exterior doors of our schools. Some of this work is weather-dependent and ongoing. In addition, the required quarterly budget and project updates have been submitted to the Department of Justice. The next item was workers' compensation. The committee reviewed the district's workers' compensation report. The district has an experience modification factor of .83. That's a three-year rolling average, while the Wisconsin State average is 1.0. The lower the experience modification factor, the lower the premiums. Waukesha has realized a savings of $136,000 due to the positive performance relating to workers' compensation. The highest claim incidence in Waukesha involves slips and falls, student behavior, and strains and sprains, which is consistent with the top three cost drivers for other school districts in the state. The third item is the facility's security improvement update. Bray Architects shared the facility's security improvement update with the committee. The district is in the planning phase to create secure entrances at all elementary schools. The projects are broken into two primary categories, domino projects and vestibule projects. Creating a secure entrance in a domino project, schools require, school requires moving the school office to the front of the building and renovation of the old office space. Creating a secure entrance in the vestibule project school requires adding or moving a bank of doors and minor renovations to the existing office. Bray Architects shared blueprints for secure entrance projects at five of our schools, Prairie, Randall, Rose Glen, some of you, and Meadowbrook. Principals at the schools were instrumental in the development of the plans. The Safety and Security Committee meeting for the month of February has canceled. Therefore, the next meeting will be held on March 21, 2019. And that, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Roddy. If you haven't had a chance to look at the drawings that were presented at the Safety and Security meeting of the changes at the schools, I recommend that you highly look at those. I was very impressed with where we're headed on those plans, so. Moving on to Human Resource and Compensation Committee, given by Ms. Reinacek.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the approval of recommended candidate for the position of Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. The administration is recommending Sharon Thede for the position of Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Ms. Sharon Thede possesses an excellent balance of strengths in the interpersonal areas in her knowledge of performance, accountability, and professional development. She has experienced navigating difficult and emotionally charged situations from her previous roles in Waukesha. From an interpersonal standpoint, she readily develops positive and trusting relationships with her staff. She shows that she values all individuals and is an excellent listener. She is the heart of a teacher successfully serving as the sail coach to four principals in the district. Her experience with educator effectiveness, new teacher development, teacher professional development, and navigating crisis is an excellent crossover to work in Human Resources. She is a team player, committed to serving the district, yet works well independently to complete projects and job responsibilities. She excels at seeing the big picture, yet can focus on details to write protocol and procedures. She is smart, strategic, and is committed to developing strong relationships. Her current relationship with the principals and knowledge of our district will assist in making a smooth transition to the Human Resources Department. Mrs. Thede received her Director of Instruction certification from Cardinal Stritch University. Her Master of Administrative Leadership and Supervision in Education and her Bachelor of Science in the Middle and Secondary Education are from UW-Milwaukee. She is currently the Director of Educator Development for the School District of Waukesha. A confidential recommendation and resume was emailed to you. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Mr. President, I move to approve the appointment of Sharon Thede for the position of Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Amanda? Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, I will just say that I support this. I've worked on and off with Sharon over the years on some of the things that, just like Karen mentioned. She's had to deal with some difficult situations in the past, and she deals with them very well. She has the talent to handle things like that, to determine, you know, what's right, what's wrong, what needs to be fixed here and stuff like that. So my experiences with her, though, I wouldn't, they're not HR-related, but she has a talent to translate, she has the talents that it can be translated and moved into her human resources situation. I just believe she can handle it nicely.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Brian?
Yeah, we spent a lot of time in committee asking questions because this is an important position. It's also an internal candidate, and the number of candidates that were interviewed, all questions were answered satisfactorily. Most of the board members know Ms. Thede and believe that she will do well in the position. position. I did vote no on this. When I look back at voting no, um, I'll be supporting it in the vote here in the board. But the reason I'll be voting in support of it is because the motion is to approve the candidate and the discussion turned into approving the contract. And it's separate from approving the candidate to approving the contract, but that wasn't the way the discussion was going. So I voted no because I felt I should be able to, the board should be reviewing the contract separately from the position. But the motion here is to approve the position, approve the candidate for the position. And that I can support. I'm not comfortable with saying I'm going to approve a contract I haven't looked at.
But to be clear, tonight's vote also supports the contract.
That's not the motion. That's not the motion.
Well, tradition has been that we're also voting on the contract. We've never separated the two out, just so you know. And so we may have a discussion, I think we may have a future discussion in HR as to whether or not we need to separate those, at least for the highest level, the cabinet positions. So.
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I disagree that we've never separated them out. I believe that we've always reviewed contracts, you know, directly. I, you know, I'm not, I don't think this is something we should be debating on this particular time because it's kind of a separate subject from approving the candidate. Now, if administration says when we approve the candidate, we approve the contract, I guess they can do that. I'm not sure we need a school board if we're not going to review contracts and make sure that the contract is, that we're comfortable with the contract. But that's, that's fine. I don't want to debate that because I'm not trying to turn it into something where I'm against the candidate.
Fair enough. Other discussion. Mrs. Reinacek.
Under our Human Resources and Compensation Committee topic, it says action items approval of a recommended candidate. It doesn't say that we're, it's the approval of the recommended candidate's contract.
Correct. The, the way the motion was made was, was for the candidate. That, that, that is absolutely 100% correct. Yep.
So what Kurt's saying is he would like it to say in the future, approval of recommended candidate and contract, and then we would actually have the contract in front of us?
Perhaps. I mean, that debate needs to take place. There's, there's a gray, gray area here. The motion is to, really just to us, whether it's a thumbs up or thumbs down, for the candidate for the position. Mr. Bryan?
Yeah, what I'm saying is that, you know, we can't change the motion. The motion, we're, we're not motioning to approve the candidate and the contract or approving the candidate. How the contract is handled, administration can deal with that later. Um, I have objected to it, the contract side of it, but I'm going to vote for the candidate, which is the motion. Okay? And I expect most people here will vote for the motion. Don't want to spend a lot of time debating the subject on this, so.
And this isn't a reflection on the individual candidate, it's on the processes, what you're talking about, so. Further discussion? Questions? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote to approve the recommended candidate for the position of Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgartner.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Barbara Brzezink.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Komo.
Aye. Passes nine zero.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our policy committee given by Mr. Baumgartner.
Okay. I have no, no action items, no information items. I have two, uh, discussion items regarding two, two policies. Actually, the wording and my script is exactly this, almost exactly the same on both of them because they are so tightly connected. So let me start with revision to policy 0131.1, bylaws and policies. Due to the volume of policy revisions that come up semi-annually, excuse me, through our, our proposed policy change, would create a more efficient policy approval process so that the committee and the board would ma, would maintain oversight and awareness of policies while expediting some policy revisions. If I may draw your attention to 0131.1, this is a policy we have had in the past for how we get policies approved at the board level. What we have done in our conversations, both Joe and myself, Joe Cook and myself, and then through the committee, what we're doing, if you look at the policy in front of you, there, we're, we're basically saying we can divide all of the policies and changes and stuff that we get into three categories. The first category is those that are quite simply undebatable. We get them from a government agency of one kind or another. They might include changing a word. They might include updating or, uh, some script or something in there, but it's something that is going to happen no matter what. And what we are saying is here is that we, in, in number one on your, your page, these fit into a category that we would be approving, suggesting approval at the committee level and then informing the board when those changes are made. Category number two is more like, is the procedure is more like the procedure we've been using all along. These would be any newly proposed bylaws and policies of the board shall be adopted or amended at any meeting of the board, provided the proposed adoption or amendment shall have been proposed at the previous board meeting, just like we do normally. We propose it here and then we bring it back next time around. So it's that, essentially that. Well, and if you read on it, as long, it, it could go on as long as necessary. Could be second meeting or third meeting, depending on if the, if the board is having issues with it. The third category, all bylaw and policy revisions, and that's the key word. So these are existing policies or, or bylaws that are being revised. Here we are saying it should be amended and repealed at any meeting of the policy board until approved or rejected, then proposed, that's the committee, then brought to the board, proposed at a, at a board meeting, remain on the agenda until approved or rejected. What we're saying is here is we could approve that without having to go through the whole second reading process if the nine-member board is, is okay with it. If they're not, we take it back and go through the committee and come back a second time along. So, uh, that's really the difference. We're, we're trying to be more efficient with what we're doing, especially not bringing all of those simple changes that are made in some of the, the federal OCR and some of those situations that come along, changing ELL to EL, things like that. Why do we need two readings for something like that? So we're going to save some time on that one. Save me reading a lot of stuff to you at meetings you don't really want to hear about anyway. And the other two really are following a pattern that we've been using anyway, but with the exception of when, if it can be dealt with in one meeting, let's just deal with it in one meeting instead of the two meetings. So that's the plan of 0131 dot one. And, uh, we aren't going, we're not seeking approval on that now, so just bringing that up so you know about it. We'll be, we'll be seeking approval at a future board meeting on that.
Any questions or comments on that? Bill, I appreciate your explanation because when you read it, I had to read it and reread it and read it again.
It's a little bit clumsy, I know.
I was trying to look at the differences, so your explanation was excellent.
But that's really what we're trying to accomplish. That's, okay, then the other one that we're dealing with is, as I said, related, 0155 with, as with changes to the previous policy due to the volume of policy revisions that come up semi-annually. The proposed policy change would create a more efficient policy approval process so that the committee and board would maintain oversight and awareness of the policies while expediting few policy revisions. Quite simply, the change on this, um, 0155 is to include policy in the list of committees that can make an approval.
Without coming to the full board.
Like we do with finance and human resources and TNL, so on. That's the only change on that one. Again, that's not for approval tonight. That's, we're just telling you about, this is our first reading on it. Yes, we, it's a discussion item.
Any comments or questions, concerns? That would be the first time I think the policy committee has some, an exception like this. So we take those exceptions light, you know, we, we look at them seriously and don't take them lightly. But everything in policy has, at least since I've been on the board, has always come full board. So I think this will help tremendously from an, from an efficiency perspective.
And I do want to reiterate the fact that even those that would not come through the whole process could be passed, that those that, the first one, it could be passed at committee level, you will be notified, the rest of the board will be notified of those changes.
Sure.
So it's not that we're hiding anything, but.
Sure, and at, at that notification time, we could give you a heads up if there is something that we'd like the committee to address and to take back and look at, so.
Good. That's it. That concludes my report.
Okay, so we'll have a vote on those next month. We'll vote on those next month, then.
Yes. And the next policy committee meeting is February 19th at 4:00 PM.
Thank you, Bill. Moving on to our technology committee given by Mr. Dietz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The technology committee met on January 16th at 5 o'clock. There were no action or information items on the agenda, but there were three discussion items. The first discussion item, instruction-related technology. The State Department of Public Instruction has issued a $9.2 million grant targeted at assisting districts to provide more personal computing devices in the classroom. The Personal Electronic Computing Device Grant provides up to $125 per ninth grade student and requires a district to provide matching funds to receive the grant. Waukesha will be applying for the grant and should be eligible to receive the maximum of $122,875 based on last year's ninth grade enrollment of 983 students. The money will be used to purchase iPads for the middle schools and for PCs for E-Achieve. Apple has released new screen time monitoring tools that are available on district devices. The monitoring tools can help families oversee and set limits on their child's device usage if they are concerned about excessive screen time. The fifth annual Waukesha One Conference was held January 21st at West High School. The conference theme of amplifying student voice foreshadowed many of the sessions that focused on student choice and voice. The keynote speakers even included several student and staff presentations that highlighted what staff members are doing and how students are taking advantage of the many opportunities to exercise their voice in the district. So that's the first one. Any questions or anybody? It's the first discussion item.
Diane?
This is a very abbreviated version of the, the discussion that we did have, and I think it's important to note that Waukesha One had over 100 sessions offered for the teachers to participate in for professional development, run by staff, which I think is an amazing, you know, effort.
Very unique to the state, so congratulations to all the staff involved.
I had a question with respect to, um, the screen time and monitoring that. And just, can you elaborate on what some of those tools are? Did you have them demonstrated or?
I know they weren't demonstrated, but, um, we were told that there would be some possible upcoming, um, parent workshops to help further explain some of that, as well as information being sent home in newsletters.
I think that's a great idea because just because you have the technology doesn't mean you're going to go out and use it and even know that it's available.
Right. And I know the district has offered information like that through newsletters and through workshops in the past, and those were certainly under consideration.
And that was an item that Representative Allen talked to us a couple of times on and, um, hopefully the technological solutions or, or resources can help in this. It's still a matter of discipline, though. People need to be involved, parents need to be involved.
Nice to see that the district is proactive, though, in that approach of offering that and.
Right. Amanda, did you have something further on that or?
Apple is providing these workshops and?
The district would be providing.
Okay, you mentioned something about Apple having, was it, um, something to monitor the screen time on the actual device?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit? What was that?
That's about as.
So that's, that's something that is going to be?
It's already on there.
It's already on there.
Yes.
Their devices.
They have a website like support.apple.com, et cetera, that we, it's one of the support tools that are available from Apple that, um, as far, as far as restrictions, content controls, et cetera, that parents would have an act, you know, ac, access to and a chance to monitor the time, screen time.
And that's above and beyond the restrictions that the district already has implemented in all the devices?
There'd be opportunities for parental control.
Additional control.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else on this first topic? Okay, Greg?
The second discussion item, infrastructure-related technology. Our school, lowercase our school, is scheduling software that initially was used by the Classic Gate Conference to schedule athletic events and is now being adopted district-wide to schedule all district facilities. School District Waukesha and Kettle Marine School District will be working together to exchange data center space for disaster planning. School District of Waukesha will locate backup and DR servers at Kettle Marine and Kettle Marine will do the same in the School District of Waukesha data center.
I think we outsource the offsite backup now, don't we, to a, a private organization, maybe? So that would be a nice cost-saving opportunity. Any, any questions, comments on this? Okay, Greg?
Okay. Third discussion item, life, uh, safety-related technology. The Raptor Visitor Management System is now fully installed and operational during normal school hours in all of our Waukesha schools. Raptor is a system that rapidly scans a visitor's photo ID and validates that the visitor is not on the National Sexual Offender Register list. Installation of Raptor includes the IT portion of the Wisconsin State Safety Grant Number One, of which the School District of Waukesha received $518,605. IT work on Safety Grant Two continues with the installation of IP speakers and clocks at all three of our high schools. Grant Two, of which the School District Waukesha received $726,000, six, or $726,610, also has supplied funds for installation of door monitoring sensors at all of our school buildings. Work is in progress on these projects as well.
Questions or comments? Ms. Voight?
I'd asked about the Raptor system, just for the understanding of the fact that it is the sexual offender database. That's what it's, what it's covering, but they can make modifications. It's not a criminal background check, but they can add local alert tags and like restraining order tags and things like that into the system to make it, you know, adapted to our specific situation.
Are we planning on doing that?
He's nodding, so.
Yeah. Have the capability of doing that? Mr. Cook?
Yes, yeah, we are, um, we're in the process of doing that. The sex offender database is the primary tool, or the primary use of this tool. We do on occasion get notified by parents, um, or other guardians that they do have something in their record and then we're able to add that. We're also given notifications by the court and we're able to add that. That is more of a manual process. It's not an automatic process like the sex offender database is.
Okay. And just real quick, how has that system been working for us? Saying we put it in all schools, all at one time, rolled it all out? How is that working out?
It's, it's working very well. Uh, we have had a few hits, uh, from offenders, um, in which we were able to notify the police and, uh, they were able to address the situation. I would say that given the near 13,000 students we have in the district at 26, 24 locations, we have had a few hits along the way. It hasn't been something that's happened on a daily basis.
Speaks highly of our community, I think. Yes.
So when they walk into a school, they show their photo ID. Once it's cleared, they get a sticker to wear throughout and then that's for some, like a certain period of time.
Correct. So it's good for the day. Um, they're able to access the school as appropriate. Um, and then when you're done, you have to check back out. If you don't check out, you can't get access to another school location. So you do have to go into the building and then come back through the office, check out of the office, turn in your sticker badge, um, and then, then you're able to access another school if you need to.
And Dr. Cook, there would be occasions when a school could suspend the use of the Raptor system?
That, that could be possible.
For grandparents' day?
If it were grandparents' day, if it were a, a music type thing, yes. And again, this is something that's in effect. And again, this is something that's in effect from the start of the school day through the last bell dismissal time. It's not anything that we're using to monitor basketball games, football games, and the musical at the high schools.
Yes, Amanda?
Just to share with the board, from a parent-use perspective, I went in, had my ID scanned, had my sticker, and then repeating coming in for other days, for other events. Because the staff knows me, they typed in my name and my, all my information came back. So every time I go in, I don't have to keep presenting the ID. I also asked about, well, what if, because at our school, you have to enter it through the front, but there's also exits in the back, and it's three levels up. I asked, I said, what happens if I forget to come back to the office to turn in the tag? They said, we'll call you, because the system at the end of the, will say, this person never checked out, we need to find out where they're at. So there are cross-security measures.
They send the paddy wagon after you?
Pretty much. So, like I said, it's not, it's not as tedious as it sounds. Once you're in the system, because they know us as families of the school, they can make the process go faster.
Other questions, comments on the Raptor system?
I can close my part.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Greg. Appreciate that. I think those are some good examples of how we continue to move forward with our technology here. Moving on to financing facilities, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had three action items. I got a question. Did all board members receive a copy of the property and land lease? Because it's listed as an action item here, and... Do you have one?
Sure, it was in the, under the FNF packet, right?
Okay, I want to make sure everybody had one. Okay, approval of the Oakdale Property County TT Land Lease. Over the years, STW has leased vacant land to local farmers using a bid process to determine market value. The committee was presented land leases for Oakdale and County TT, with Kevin McCarthy being the highest bidder for both properties. The committee approved the Oakdale and County TT land leases as presented, and I so moved.
Is there a second by Patrick McCaffrey? Discussion?
This is the highest bidder, Mr. Como, and we went through the normal process, and it's highest bidder by a fair margin.
It's a closed, closed bid process, right? Each individual bidder submits it closed, and that's how we've been doing it for past number of years, so...
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on the two leases? Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye, passes nine zero, Sue. Kurt?
The next action item was approval of Adult Days Services lease. The current lease of White Rock by Adult Days Services is set to expire this June. Adult Days Services would like to expand their current leased area by 2,393 square feet, with requested upgrades to be funded by them. The annual rent range from $28,200 to over $30,000 over the term of the three-year lease. The committee approved the Adult Days Services lease as presented, and I so moved.
I second.
Second, second by Mrs. Voight? Discussion? Is this the second year for this program, Dr. Cook, or third? Third year? Okay. I know we asked a lot of questions, it's been successful, there haven't been any issues with the other programs and the other students in the building, so... Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye, passes nine zero. Kurt?
The third item was the discontinuance of the sports facility usage agreement. The committee approved the resolution as amended, which establishes a deadline of March 15, 2019, to reach a mutual agreement between the district and Rock Ventures. In the absence of a new agreement, the existing agreement dated March 12, 2014 shall be terminated. This is not an action item for the full board, it's an action item for the committee. The committee passed at five to zero. It is perfectly appropriate for any board member to ask questions if they have questions at this time.
Mr. O'Brien, I think it's probably appropriate to point out that the reason it's not an action item here is because the Facilities Finance Committee has control over building use. It doesn't go past the FNF Committee normally, so that's why this is not an action item at the board level.
And one other thing I'd like to say, in terms of process and efficiency, unless we had significant changes that would require us to go into closed session for these items, we didn't, any board member, any committee member could request closed session, but we didn't just automatically go into it, because in those items that we had previously covered in closed session, we, pretty much, these things were applied, so... Information items, monthly budget update. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of January. $39,995, $39,995, $39,995,746 was reported in the general fund. Get confused between millions and thousands, I guess. And $10,142,100 was expended during the month. There was $2,734,34 reported into Special Education Fund revenue, and $2,993,937 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection in other areas. The other information item was the long-range budget forecast. The committee reviewed the outcome of the long-term fiscal forecast. The state biennial budget will provide final answers on the revenue side, while the Board of Education has more control over the expenses. As resident enrollment declines, STW continues to realize revenue limit reductions, while the Consumer Price Index and the employment market are putting forward pressure on salary and expenses. We are looking to a budget adjustment of $3.5 million for 2019, 2020. Express Swim information, a summary of various swim facilities was provided to the committee. In short, South Pool Facility is top-notch for competition purposes compared to other area facilities recently built after South. But it is in need of increased maintenance because of the time that we've had the facility. The current and previous payment history of Express Swim was also shared, as contract negotiations are ongoing. We'll be going back and looking at what maintenance needs to be done and how it will be paid for.
I think it's 15 years old now, I think?
Right.
Mr. O'Brien, so...
What's exciting is that we are really the top facility in the area still. We have a true competition pool, which reflects the planning that went into that pool by Express when they helped us make the decision to do the pool. The other new schools that are built, they don't have the seating, they don't have the warm-up areas, they don't have the quality of competition capability in the pool. In addition, this pool is a broader community asset than this Waukesha. We run a joint program with Catholic Memorial, we run a joint program with McQuanigo, and we run a joint program with Kettle Moraine. So it's a, it's a area-wide pool, and we'll be reaching out to those other districts for support in the maintenance of the pool.
Hey, just from a, from a seating capacity perspective, I didn't realize the difference between our pool itself and others in Wisconsin. I mean, we can seat 2,000 spectators, and I think the next largest one is 800, and that's why we can hold those state-level competitions and those United States competitions by those United States programs, so...
And most of us know the history of why there's so much seating in that pool, because of the old pool, when they used to have the big elementary school contests, and you had to pack a whole bunch of young children in there, and it was impossible. And now we have a facility that not only is good for all our children when those events happen, but it's been a great facility, but it does require maintenance, and we can't let it fall behind in terms of keeping it at a high level. Third was the referendum financing plan. Michelle Weiberg, she stayed right on schedule, she got hers done in 15 minutes. From PMA Financial, presented a financial plan that could provide the necessary flexibility to allow for prepayment of the debt if the opportunity should arise. Next steps were outlined with the Standard Port Rating Call to be held on February 21st, final interest rates locked in on March 13th, and funds received on April 15th. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
And that is a discussion item. I don't know if anybody had any questions or comments.
Oh, anyone have any questions on the financing issues? I will say that this is a, this is a very creative way we're going about, and we're trying to make sure that we don't mess up on the interest rates, because they're, they're a little bit unpredictable right now. We don't know how the economy's going to go and how that'll affect interest rates. But they do have the flexibility to jump when they have to jump, and, and we haven't had our rating yet, which will affect our rates, actually. So Standard and Port should be giving us the highest possible rating. Correct, Mr. Gray?
Yes, I hope so. Well, I don't know if it'll be the absolute highest, but the next one down, there are only four districts in the state that have that, and I expect we'll, we'll get there. At least that's what I'm telling PMA, that I'm expecting to get there, because we do have some good, we have a really good story to tell financially, so hopefully we can get there.
So to put that in perspective, there's, what, 426 districts in the state of Wisconsin? And so with the rating that we are hoping to get, we would be in the top four, is what you're saying?
Right, right. And those are all relatively small districts that are in that, in that range, so...
So there was one other addition, before concluding my report, there was one other additional action item that we took at FNF. We did approve the Montessori agreement at committee. That's the, and if Mr. Gray would go ahead and elaborate on that program a little bit?
The Montessori program is, we've contracted with Montessori for 30 seats starting in 4K. That's where, that's where the program started. It was just one of those original 4K programs, and we had a lot of people coming and saying, boy, would it be nice to be able to, to continue in this way. And since Montessori is a private school, they, and did not want to go voucher, we worked out an opportunity for 30 seats per grade as it progresses, and I don't recall, I think we're up to either third or fourth grade, but it's been a good opportunity for, for our students who want that kind of education, and the nice thing is, it's, it's not a school that we have to maintain, we simply pay a portion of the funds that we receive from the state. So it's, it's been a good, and I think it's been a good opportunity for Montessori as well.
So just to reflect some of the things the committee asked for, which Montessori agreed to, we asked for a shorter term because of the unpredictability of our state legislators as far as these programs go. And with that came a, an agreement to add a year as, you know, as things develop, so... It's a two-year term with the option to add a year thereafter, reviewable every year to see if we can continue to extend it. So we can end it, but we can extend it as well.
Mr. Baumgart?
I have a logistics question, because I see that as number 11 on, on our list here.
Was it still on our list? The separate item?
First, we're going to a closed session on it, and then we're going to bring it back out of closed session.
It was, it was agendized that way, because I gave, on the FNF Committee, it was after closed session to give the committee the option to go into closed session and then come out and take action. And with FNF being two days before, and we go out in the same packet, I had to follow the same path on the board agenda.
We probably have to do it on the agenda. I didn't notice it was at the end of the agenda, so we probably have to follow the agenda.
So...
I think you have to follow the posted agenda.
Yeah.
We do. We do.
You have to follow the posted agenda.
We'll have to take action at the end.
At the end.
You can move things out as far as sequence, can't you?
Sure we can.
This, though...
I guess I would recommend...
This was... Very last thing on, on the last page.
It's, it's, that's the item right there that, I mean, if we don't need anything else for closed session, we can go in for...
We could just continue, right?
15 seconds.
Well, we don't, we don't have to go into closed session, we could just continue the open meeting on that item, so...
I don't see why we could.
Yeah, so it's really a point of order in terms of when we talk about this.
To be safe, I believe, we should put it at the end where it's at, and we won't probably be going into closed session for it, so...
Okay.
Okay, that concludes my report, before I get into any more trouble.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. We'll move on to teaching and learning with Pat, Patrick McCaffrey.
Very, thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on February 5, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Baumgart, for stepping in. I had an engagement at the last minute, so I could not make the meeting. We have two information items that appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. The AGR Grant Update was the first one. Principal DeLeone gave an update on Whittier's Achievement Gap Reduction Grant. One of the requirements in receiving the grant is to present twice a year in order to keep our school board updated and informed on how the grant money is being utilized. She shared that it is currently being used for small classroom sizes, 18 students or less, in grade K3, and spoke about the impact it is having on Whittier's sale goals and student achievement. Our second information item was the Trauma Sensitive Schools District Update. Luke Pinion, Jody Evenger Bentley, and Kathy Callahan provided the board members with an update regarding trauma-sensitive schools training throughout the district. Specifically, they talked about three hours of mandatory trauma training that is being provided to all School District of Waukesha staff over the course of the year. This was one of the requirements of the Safety Grant we were awarded and has been very well received by our staff. Many staff have asked for additional time to continue learning and discussing more about this topic. The three hours of training provided to staff this school year include six 30-minute lessons presented by Student Services staff members throughout the course of the year. The presenters also provided the TNL Committee with a brief overview of the prevalence and impact of adverse childhood experiences. This included the scientific impact childhood traumatic experiences have on brain development and associated behavior. Many times, our students with the most behavioral challenges are students who have had the most trauma early in their lives. Though trauma doesn't excuse behavior, the team discussed how this helps explain behavior and creates opportunities for staff to better understand and approach it. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report. The next Teaching and Learning Committee meeting will be held Tuesday, March 5, 2019.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. Okay, moving on to other business, are there any recommendations for future full Board of Education meetings, agendized items, or any recommendations to the committee chairs? Topics? Okay, then I'll ask, would anyone like to go into closed session for Item C? We don't have to. We did not go into closed session at FNF, but we can, because it is a contract.
I have another question on that item.
Yes.
Because in C, we refer, you referred to land acquisition, apparently that's been dealt with.
Yep, that one, we don't need...
What about the SROs?
We don't need the SROs.
Then I have no reason to go into closed session.
You did?
No.
Okay. All right. Anybody want to? Okay, so we don't have to go into closed session, so we'll just continue right on to Item 11 at this time, which is the Montessori Agreement. Kurt?
Okay, back to the approval of the Montessori Agreement. We made all the changes as discussed previously, I don't need to repeat them. Essentially, the committee had gone into closed session in the previous meeting, asked for these changes. Administration of Montessori came back with the proposal for the changes. It was basically the length of the agreement that we were looking to control, and those changes were made, and the committee approved the agreement 5-0 on Monday night, and I moved for approval of the Montessori Agreement.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. McCaffrey? Discussion?
Good program, keep it going.
Mr. Brian?
I just have to say that the Montessori people are what I call community-oriented people. They come to almost every board meeting, they don't have to. They want to be part of the, of the overall education apartment, environment of this district, both public and as them as a private partner. And, you know, it's, it's just phenomenal to see people working together the way the district, as a public school district, and Montessori work together. And the fact that when we asked for changes, there was no pushback, and they were patient, but they, it was timely that we finally approved this, they were waiting, so...
And we have an open invite to visit them also, if we ever wanted to see the program in action. We're always welcome there. All right, any other discussion on the contract, the Montessori school contract? One of the other things is we combined a couple contracts together, so it's a little bit more efficient, you might have noticed that, so, I don't know if you brought that up, Kurt, or not.
No.
So, okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye. Passes nine zero, and that is...
Still have a question?
Yes.
What's with the SROs?
It was moved off to the next meeting. We needed more information.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Basically, I'll, we've asked for information on what the previous contracts were reviewing and comparing, you know. We'll eventually get there.
And for FNF members, those previous agreements were all emailed out to you, so if you want to peruse them, feel free.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. We are adjourned.